I'm glad to do that. I want to clarify what the exact changes are in the two areas. The fact of what I noticed I was taking, we want to restructure the paragraph that referred to redevelopment on South Water Avenue on Page 786.
Revitalize is the word there.
Also.
That rural area that's not moved then?
This is a second. This area has been designated for rural in the south central portion of town. Some of it's not in city limits now. We want somehow tie a policy on construction of a roadway contingent upon any land use changes.
I don't think he was asking for the changes. He just had some kind of added saying that should a connection be established by investor slash developer, then that area is certainly subject to direct by the city of this one and likely change.
Are you suggesting then that the roadway would be, that the intersections at those lanes into the Lake Meadows be realigned and the roadway extend from its current terminus just south of Niggles Lane to Peach Valley Road before any land use changes?
What you're saying when.
Part of the project.
Yeah, when the road is realigned, it never will.
Are we not doing that anyway? When things like a new road is built, are we going to go in and change?
Yeah, we can.
Well, I just think your strength and articulate condition and, especially when you look at the city and you see, you know, Core with a long condition for development, and you see these areas that aren't, it makes you go like, too large, they still offer things that talks of wasteland, is that a land preserve or, you know.
My concern is a timing issue. Someone's not going to be willing to invest in property if the city has a much different schedule for making the line of the road for imposing a construction on a developer or a developer volunteering to create and then construction. There's a variety of options that you can unleash.
I think you could leave it where I say there is an essential need that the city is not willing to assume to have this road path. And so there would have to be a plan for that before any intensive development happens.
And then the third one was changes to. I'm not sure the extent of that area. I hope it's been a road probably from 109 out to see that road.
I can look at them via the, we'll bring them on after we can show you the line thing and the essential bills.
There was some discussion that there were some ideas that we could have at the planning commission in the marketing section.
Depending on that fossils lie and, I think we're not resolved, the proposal to show the side.
Okay, and I want you to be aware also, I can't remember which area it's on, say the opposite or something, is there's essentially overlay activity center, corner center between that area as well.
That's like a day out.
On.
That's turned down.
Well, that's not going to be anything between the import and along the two common roads by the power company.
I'm talking about that market. I offer, when, uh.
What your program is, you found out that way that it. Will this affect the development need with the grain side out here in Longview? Cemeteries would be protected no matter what type of development. The Hyman's Plan won't affect that. No matter whether the Hyman's Plan won't affect that. So if there's any developing, those areas would be set aside and preserved, of course. I don't know how long this will lead to develop land or from there to develop language appropriate or at least perform to effect of this community. If your blessing went into the planning commission and, I mean, mentioned back, right, a few minutes ago. Any other questions?
Anything we, do you think that we all look at that we're not ready for?
You know, things changing politically, I guess, and geographically.
And right now, there is no policy in our comp plan that deals with the city's ability. And David might want to speak to this about restricting city utilities to properties within the city.
Yeah, I've been wrestling with that a lot, too. I think that that could help us keep density located where it should be and not spreading out everywhere. Years ago, we did that because we thought that was the smart thing to do, to get investment in our area before we had such a demand for it. But I'm thinking now, we kind of want to.
Well, the old comp plan did have a policy that essentially said that.
Right. But remember, we changed it.
But the, but the comp plan kept the same policy, which the council never adopted. The council did adopt, went back and forth, adopting resolutions to either restrict it or allow it. So right now, the policy in effect, the resolution, which was passed in about 2016 or 17, allows it. So what could happen is that people who want to develop in the.
Hey, we're online, Larry.
People who want to develop in, surrounding the city, using city utilities, would be able to do so, of course, at their cost, assuming there's capacity available, but at their cost and develop in the county surrounding the city. And that would obviously fabricate or disfragment over the time, longer period of time, the city's ability to grow and service those areas.
And I truly don't know what the right answer is. I mean, you know, I wish the county would develop a more preservation approach to the development out there where they, you know, clustered and preserved rather than one, 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 one everywhere.
Well, we, and we may get a surge of annexation requests here in coming years.
Thank you, Mr. McCord. He's up next.
Okay, let's move on to item number two. This is an ordinance 02205-25, amending the Gallatin zoning ordinance to remove the use of animal care with conditions and to add the animal care limited use as a permitted use in select zoning district. Mr. McCord.
Okay, this next item is a.
Okay, this next item is a request that's really made by the planning commission after a presentation before the planning commission for a master plan amendment to allow animal care on a property that didn't comply with the provisions of the existing ordinance. So some of you on the council may remember a few years ago that we amended the code to have a use called animal care with the following conditions, and it had some limitations. It was a little more restrictive than general animal care that's mostly restricted to commercial zoning districts. So this opened up animal care with these restrictions in, let's call it lower intensity commercial areas, including MRO, MU zone, PNC plan, neighborhood commercial, and CC zones. So these were the smaller scale animal care facilities. And you may remember also that the Bluegrass Animal Clinic, which is out there on 109 at the entrance to Lennox Place, was the beneficiary of that initial change in the code. Well, I guess it was back in December initially that an applicant applied for a master plan as part of the Kensington Downs Development, and that's just down Freedom Church Road. And they wanted to put in an animal care facility. And it's zoned MRO out there. So the problem there, of course, is that they're limited to only the type of animal care with those conditions. And their facility didn't meet those conditions. So as it went through the planning commission, the planning commission kept discussing about how they can essentially allow this type of use in there, even though it didn't qualify as an animal care with conditions use. So eventually, they came back and they approved an ordinance subject to, excuse me, not an ordinance, a resolution, subject to an ordinance being amended that would allow them to build what they want to do. So that's why we're here. And the planning commission did go through this and had several meetings where they discussed this proposed change. And so what we had proposed to the planning commission is that they changed it from animal care with these following conditions to just to retitle it as animal care limited. It's basically the same thing, but they changed the conditions. And the basic changes that they made were that the distance between an existing residential structure for this animal care would be 500 feet if they had a larger outdoor run area. If it was, if they had a residence within 500 feet, it's complicated. Then they have a smaller allowed outdoor run area. And then they also had some limits on the hours that they could operate. So you're not going to have barking dogs and crying cats maybe during the nighttime. So the outdoor activities would be limited to the daytime hours and slightly different on the weekends, a little more restrictive on the weekends. And so the planning commission reviewed that ordinance, and that's what you have before you is an ordinance that will modify the animal care limited is what the title is.
Hold on, would you please call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garce.
And so if you're willing to make those changes, what will happen is that the resolution that the planning commission approved for that would be eligible or enacted. Right now, it's not enacted. So it would take this ordinance to change the code to qualify that resolution. I think I covered most of it. If you're familiar with where the cheer gym and I guess its gymnastics gym is next to Freedom Church, there's a vacant lot there just to the south of that. And that's where they would like to construct this facility. Right now, there is a master plan for Kensington Downs subdivision. Part of it's under construction now on the north end, and it will wrap around the backside of there. So eventually, there will be houses that will be fairly close to this facility. However, they're not existing. And that's a key word in this ordinance. It talks about existing. Now, obviously, with all these little intricacies of the ordinance measuring the time and the hours and so forth, there's an enforcement mechanism. So where these things will be occurring over time will have possible enforcement issues, particularly, I would think, related to noise, which can be done under the noise ordinance. But there may be some other things. But every time you add some kind of intricacy like that, that opens the door for how are we going to enforce it. I also want to point out that those districts that I mentioned that this applies to, they're all over town. So you can imagine there's places that are zoned MRO and MU and PNC that are adjacent to residential developments right now. So they may be restricted and allowed and with a smaller outdoor area. But as newer development, if they select a site and newer development comes in around it, they will be a little bit different standard. The noise standard still applies. That's part of the city code. So it doesn't matter whether the distance is qualified or not. It's the noise that would probably be the likely issue that's related to code enforcement.
Bill, isn't that the same? Wasn't that brought up as the same as if somebody builds a housing development near the airport? They, they know what's, they know what's there before they build it.
Yes, I guess that was an analogy.
And the restrictions we were putting on there are keep the noise to certain hours. As he said, to certain hours and a certain distance from any residences.
Thank you.
Motion to send it on.
Have a motion to send, to send it on and seconded. And do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? The next order, the next item is a resolution number R2205-44, and that's a resolution approving a mural at 118 West Main Street. And I understand we have a representative here who would like to have a, make a presentation.
Yes, we'll welcome him to the podium along with Kim Baker. I will just remind this body that the process that we put in place some years ago was that we would submit proposals to the Arts Council. They would either confirm or deny that the proposed mural was art that enhanced the community of our character, enhanced the character of our community. And then this body would then vote to allow it. And so tonight, we have a very special proposal before us, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Baker.
Thank you. Thank you for listening to us tonight. And tonight, I'm excited to bring a good friend of mine, Liam Alexander, before y'all. He does not need me up here, but I wanted to introduce him. And my name and signature is on that application and the information you've received, but he is the brainchild behind all of this. So thank you, Liam.
Mayor and council, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I would like to address item number three on the agenda. My name is Liam Alexander, and I'm a Boy Scout with Troop 407 here in Gallatin. We meet at the First United Methodist Church across the street. I am working on my Eagle Scout project, and the mural proposed in item three is a vital part of that project. Our project is much more than just the mural. I have been working to transform the alley between the Chamber of Commerce and the Secret Garden for the last year. I call the project Hawkins Alley, after the late Mr. Jim Hawkins. He was an example of a good citizen and showed many of us the value of doing good deeds. He was an inspiration to me and many others. In the alley, I have added a blessing box. It is a pantry for non-perishable food items for those that need to be blessed or take a blessing. There is a kindness board to leave notes with kind messages and inspiration. I also installed a flag drop box for American flags that need to be retired. There is new lighting and landscaping, along with a table and seating. Leadership Gallatin also donated a free little library for the alley. The mural I am proposing would say, "Do a Good Turn Daily," which is the scout slogan, but also what I want, what I want my project to inspire in the citizens and visitors of Gallatin. I want the alley to be more than just a pass-through, but an opportunity for anyone to do a good deed, either by donating to the blessing box, writing a note of kindness, or sharing a book in the library. I want Hawkins Alley to become a reminder to everyone that kindness can be simple and should be shared. Every time someone takes a picture with the mural and shares it to someone else, the message will be a reminder for all to take the time to be kind. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
What a lovely description of what you're creating and so reflective, I think, of our community and the character that we want to exhibit.
Motion to send it on.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I have one question. You have two renditions of it.
Yes, we are currently deciding on which one to use.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is fiscal year 2022-23 budget presentation. Mayor.
Yes, and I have a clicker. You all have the detailed version of the budget from Ms. Nichols. And I don't know, I don't know that I have one, which I could need one if you guys have questions you want me to answer, rather than going through all my stacks of paper. But basically, I'm going to present to you just kind of the overview of the budget like I do each year, and then you can use your detailed budget to go and contrast and compare. But, you know, I love doing the budget. It's always challenging, but it's also very exciting because it helps me in my mind draw the future of our city and, you know, what we're going to be doing this year and things that we need to be thinking about for future years. And so with that, I'm pleased to present to you all the 22-23 budget this year. This is definitely the largest budget number the city has ever seen, $50,935,720. That includes the operating expenses of 42, close to four, revenue of close to 50, oh, $49 million, and then capital of $8.5 million. This budget number is big this year, and a lot of the reason that it's so big is because our department heads and our grant administrator in this body have been so supportive of the application for grants that we have done. So we have a lot of grant dollars flowing through on that revenue line. That is not all recurring revenue that we can count on. A lot of that revenue is programmed grant dollars that we will be utilizing in this year. So compared this budget to last year, you can see a sizable increase, actually 17.75% increase, again, for the reason that I just explained. I want to give you a look at kind of sales tax revenue because, you know, this is the crazy story that is not uncommon anywhere in middle Tennessee. But I would submit that we are probably a little bit more fortunate than even the other cities. So you just look back 22 to 21, 6.5 versus almost eight, and the state shared 2.3 to 3, almost two. Tremendous increases. And then when you look back and realize just in 2018, we were at 5.6, and now we're at almost eight.
Why do you think that?
Oh, it's so many things. I think, you know, it's the growth of the households here. It's certainly the growth of the commercial and restaurants that we have in our community. But, you know, I'm also really becoming aware of some of the impacts of the location of Facebook and all those employees here. Had a really interesting conversation with a friend of mine just yesterday, and he told me that his son works for a local company and has been here forever. I would have no idea that they would be a supplier to Facebook in any capacity. But he told me he's selling to him between, he is selling to Facebook between $200,000 and $300,000 a month. And he is now going to be selling to them to support their, their plant in Alabama. So, you know, that's an impact on our city that we did not even count on when this started happening. But, but yeah, so that's, that's part of it. Certainly, you know, there's some impact from the stimulus checks that happened in the last couple of years. There's some impact because there's a lot more people that are not leaving Gallatin and going to work somewhere else. So there's so many things that are coming together to impact that. And, and it, I'm optimistic, but we are hitting difficult times ahead. And I think people's spending will decline, and we'll see numbers decline. But I think we're in a very strong position and should be able to navigate more difficult waters when they come. So this is the property tax revenue. You know, I was really, really disappointed to see such a small gap between 21 and 22. But we do know that historically, getting the properties on the tax roll as they're supposed to be has been a challenge. We've had, I think they're supposed to be on the tax roll, was it 90 days or 120 days? Anyway, they're supposed to be on the tax roll in a, in a defined period of time, but we've had some go very, very long time. And so we don't get their taxes for a year. It's really, it's really frustrating and disappointing, and we've tried numerous times to adjust that. This is a number that Councilman Mayberry used to always ask. It's, you know, what does a penny bring in in revenue to the city on our property tax? It's $173,220. I can remember when it was under $100,000. So that's making, I don't know, and that has to do with property values. Revenue versus expenditures, just to kind of give you a full picture of where we are. The revenue that we're using is, you know, the revenue that we're projecting coming into our city is $46.8 million. Our operating expenditures are at 42,372. You take our revenue, subtract our operating expenditures, we're left with 4.461. So when you add that to make our total budget number, we're essentially $1.9 million short. And for that, I have suggested to you all that we use reserve funds, which is what we have done for a lot of years. We use surplus from years prior, and I'll show that to you in more detail. So this is kind of another look at what I was just talking about. Your total budget number is 50,935,720. Subtracting our, well, while taking together our reserve funds of 1.9 and our revenue of 49.3, you come up with that 50,935,725 number. Again, that's that much from the reserve funds. So looking at our total budget this year, there were requests totaling $67,751,439. The budget is as I'm showing to you today. Just a reminder that this year, we did vote to increase the percentage that we put in our rainy day fund. So our rainy day fund this year will be $10,500, based on this budget, $10,593,072. Our additional reserve after we use that 1.9 will be $6,318,891. You're not going to find many cities our size with our economic distribution of citizens to have these kinds of numbers. So I'm very, very proud of that. Just showing our fund balance detail because you guys always like to see that. Our surplus on 630, 21 was 22, 936,416. We carried over $3.3 million in projects. The mid-year appropriations were 771,94. Those were, you know, emergency things that happened that we made, you know, quick changes to. Taken away our $10,500,000 rainy day fund and the 1.9 in surplus capital. So that leaves us with the projected balance at the end of this next fiscal year of $6.3 million, as I showed you just a few minutes ago. So now we're getting into the operating expenses, and this is just showing you the various departments and the changes, increases or decreases between the 21-22 year and the 20-22-23 year. Some go up, some don't go down. This includes all the expenses, depending on what they're purchasing that year. It's going, it can be, you know, way up or it can be way down, you know, especially when you get into some of these departments where you have professional services. So it's hard, I like to show you this, but you really have to kind of read between the lines and look at the actual budgets so you can see that we're not increasing and decreasing recurring expenses as much as we are changing, you know, had a number in last year, we're adding a number in this year for a specific project. So that's, the next page is a continuing of looking at the department year-to-year comparison. This is the utilities departments. So looking at our water sewer, Mr. Coggs projecting a revenue of $18,272,000 with expenses of $17,465,681. Gas revenue of 23,000, 100, 23, I cannot speak tonight, $23,104,000, expenses of $23,400. twenty-three million, one hundred and four thousand, expenses of twenty-three million, four hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Stormwater, um, this, of course, would be in Nick's lane. Um, one point nine million dollars, expenses of two point, well, two million, three forty-one, five sixty-three. And then environmental services with Mr. De Priest, we have expenses of three million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand and revenue of three million, one hundred and ninety, one, three million, one hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Getting into the position requests for the city of Gallatin, we had fifteen new position requests. We have thirty-one reclassification requests. Because of trying to implement the pay-in, pay study and the impact that that's going to have on our budget this year, I did not include any new positions in this budget. There were thirty-one reclassification requests, and those will be reflected in the pay study when it's presented to you in a few weeks. Um, not all exactly probably as they were requested, but with some version of them that the engineer thinks makes sense. So, um, this slide just gives you an overview of the positions that were requested. And there are probably some places where we might want to appropriate mid-year or we feel real strongly that we need to go ahead and do it. Um, the thirty-one reclassification requests are articulated in this slide, and, um, some had to do with just, uh, job descriptions and didn't actually change their class, but they're there for you to look at. Um, that's continuation of the reclassification request because that was a lot. But a lot of the departments really looked at their positions because they knew the pay study was coming through, and they wanted to get that baked into that. So on the pay study, um, we're still working with the consultant. Um, I've met with them, department heads have met with them. There are some things that I think we probably all have unease with. What we have budgeted for in this budget is a six point five percent average increase at a cost of one point, almost five million dollars. You know, that puts us this market. Now, one thing I do want to say that I have learned in this experience with the consultant is that he's making a point that that COLA is going to be a really big piece to keep us competitive in the years ahead. So while we have always done step increases, we have not always done COLA. And not just, he's saying not just a two point five percent COLA, but a three percent COLA is probably what we're going to need to look at to stay on track. So I think what's going to happen is we move on down the road, we probably need to spend some dollars to check in with the consultant each year and say, will this, whatever it is that we're looking at, two and a half percent, three percent, three and a half percent, will that keep us on track with the competition in the market? Um, so I just want y'all to kind of know that as we look ahead, look ahead. Now, looking at the capital budget, a lot of capital requests. And so what you're going to see here is by department, you're going to see the first column what the request is. The second column is what is funded, and then the third column is what is not funded. So, um, you know, unfortunately, um, there's a lot in here that is not funded. Some of it, um, not funded strategically by me because I believe it's things that, um, we need to, um, look at together comprehensively with other needs that aren't even on the table yet because we need to prioritize those, and we need to develop a long-term plan for how we might like to address those things. And these would be some of the bigger dollar numbers. Um, and, and then some of the other things that are not getting funded, it's because I'm thinking that we'll be able to make it happen next year or, um, that it's something that I think that we could easily take care of with some small portion of ARPA funds, or I think it's maybe not needed at this time. And some, I'm just, um, just trying to spread the dollars around without going too far into our reserve fund, especially with what I think that we could be facing in the years ahead. So, um, that goes through all of the departments, all of the funded and unfunded budget. But I think what will kind of help you drive it home is when you look at those numbers. Our total capital, and we've never had a number like this before, is twelve million, nine hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and thirty, I think. I'm looking at the screen. Um, and then our unfunded is almost that same amount, eleven million, forty-three, five hundred and fifty-seven. Um, you know, some of the things that I do have in here that I'm so excited that we have in here is, um, really, really things for every department. We have a very robust paving budget in there, which I think is, um, you know, something that we need to recognize. Um, we have, um, new fire apparatus in there. We have, um, golf carts for the department. Having a hard time seeing that far. Anyway, there's some big numbers in there for some various things. Lot of engineering projects, um, still taking care of police cars. That repaving number is two point one, which a large part of the reason that it's so high this year is because we need to repave greenly, and that in itself is going to cost about a million dollars. This is just a quick look at our debt. Um, it's our general obligation bonds. Our twenty-twenty-three payment will be two million, six ninety-one, eight fifty. Our principal balance is at twenty-six, one thirty-five. Our interest balance is at six point five. Um, moving on now to community enhancement grant requests. Um, I'm trying to think who was there for, Linda, you were there for that day. Um, Eileen, were you there for that day too?
No.
For the community enhancement grants? You weren't. Guess it was just Ms. Love. Um, so we had, um, we did it as a committee, as we have done for several years now, and had several employees within the city. Um, Velma Brinkley participated, she has for several years. Is kind of the community expert and the grants and nonprofit expert. So again, I formatted this like some of the other things you've seen with the organization, what we granted to them in the previous year, what they have requested, and what the committee has recommended. Now, there was, um, you see Friends of Miracle Park there, and that was really just kind of a misunderstanding request about why they requested from the city, not really understanding that our expectation with them is that we're already doing a lot to fund the operations of the Miracle Park, and that organization exists to seek funds from other sources that the government can't seek. Um, and then you'll see that Habitat for Humanity did not request funds this year. Um, Mid Cumberland Agencies, we felt like that was, or I say we, the committee felt like that was such a huge organization with so much funding, and there wasn't really anyone here that could dial it down to the local level to help us make sense of it. And so they recommended not funding that this year. Um, the Prevention Coalition did not request last year. They have years previously. That's formerly the Anti-Drug Coalition. So they requested five thousand, we recommended four thousand. Transit Alliance of Middle Tennessee, they've requested before. We've never funded them. They requested fifteen hundred dollars. I think the committee's position was that that is largely a lobbying organization or a advocacy organization, and we felt like we wanted to keep our taxpayer dollars local, benefiting some of the good nonprofits that exist in our community. So, um, the requested total was three, fifty-eight, four-seventy. The recommended, um, budget number is two, ninety-eight, nine seventy, I think. So, yeah, oh, there it is, some big numbers. Um, so that's just kind of a recap of what the requests were, what the budget's being presented as, what the rainy day fund would be, and then what our other reserve dollars would be. Uh, another look at the total budget, operating revenue and capital, and that's it. That's a quick run-through for you guys. Happy to answer any questions, um, see if there's anything that jumps out at you right back, right off. Our department heads have just been given a look of that, um, I guess this morning. Um, we met today in our department head meeting. I told them, you know, be in touch with me if I've done, you know, if I, I guarantee you there's something that I've left out that I should not have left out that we will have to add back in as we go through the approval process. Also, um, you know, tell the department heads, if I have taken money from somewhere and you think that we should move it from that place to somewhere else within your department, I think we're all open to that. Um, so, um, you know, we have a little flexibility, but I do want to keep these dollars, um, reined in kind of where we are at that total number.
Mayor, I have a question in regards to page twenty-three. We've, we've got a lot of our ball fields, parks, with no lights. Why don't we, why don't we put lights on all our fields instead of having our constituents go to Hensville and other places to use the park?
Because it's really, really expensive, and we can't do them all at one time. And I think that those are, or some of those could be areas that we might use some ARPA funds. But, I mean, you look at the numbers associated with lighting those fields, and they are big, big dollars.
Little over a million dollars to light them all, all for them. But, you know, this is just my personal opinion. Instead of putting money in the rainy day fund, I would love to see the day come where all of our fields, soccer fields, any kind of field that we have in the city of Gallatin have lights on them.
Well, I think, um, well, first of all, we are required to put the money in a rainy day fund. That's not an option not to. Um, we have to do that, but, um, what I would really-
We have to put that amount.
Pardon me?
We have to put that amount.
Yeah, it's, it's required. Um, but what I would say is that we really need to do an analysis, and I think that the Park Master Plan will help us with this, to see what the priorities are for lighting and what kind of, of, um, return on investment it brings to us. Um, you know, we don't want to light a field that never gets used at night, and-
Hey, Joe, I, I do agree with, uh, John D. some, pretty much. Um, I know that over by the Miracle Park, we got two fields over there that's got really nice, um, foundations, you know, really nice press boxes and stuff, and it's just been like a ghost town over for years. If, if, I understand what you're saying too. Is it worth putting the money into it, and we're going to build a field in that area over there, the parks? I guess we need to wait back till that master plan comes back and see what they think we need to do with our parks. Because I, I hate seeing those, that nice facility over there that's not even being utilized at all. I just, I don't like that.
I hate to see our, our people, our constituents, going to Hensville and other places to use their parks when we have parks, and the only issue that we have, we don't have lights on them.
You know, another thing too, we just built that pickleball, pickle, whatever that field was.
That was requested as well.
Pickleball.
Yeah, but, but, you know, using it during the day, I, I guess there would be a need the way the hot weather's coming in, people like to be out there in the evening doing it. But I wish we could look at this, uh, study that we done, and then we could try to get an idea of what we need to do and move with our park system in the direction we need to go.
But, you know, if we, if we light them, then we need a robust plan to utilize those fields-
I'm with you there. I'm just pointing out, I agree with John D.
For our return on-
And I think they will be utilized if, if we have them lighting.
We need a plan to support that.
But when are we going to get our evaluation of the park systems back?
I agree with that.
How many years have those parks been without lights?
Pardon me?
How many years have those parks been without lights?
I don't know, y'all tell me you've been here longer than me.
Long time.
When are we going to get that survey back?
Um, I don't, Mr. Brown, do you have any idea?
I hope I drew up.
Okay, so, we'll have that.
Let's see, we got one, let's see what we got. I can't even see.
Maybe if we had more permits coming in.
Paige.
Pardon me?
This don't affect the budget at all, but I think Jimmy and I had some conversations about it. The baggage row for GHS, I believe that's completely done with by now, isn't it?
Well, I do not have that in the budget this year, but, um, we have not gotten, we have met with the school board, I think, a couple of times at this point with the promise that they would get back to us. We said we'd stay, you know, we'd show them where it was going to go. And we're just not getting good communication. So I'm, I'm not going to say it's dead, 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 dead. And we'll continue to make the offer because we do think it would be very good. Um, but, you know, they gotta cooperate with us.
We don't have any money set aside for that, though.
Um, not at this point, no.
Oh, okay.
We may, have we had some that's carried over, Mr. Tugel? Yeah, just, just a little that's carried over, but, you know.
And we only have the four fields. We've got the Thompson, uh, Park Field, uh, need lights. We've got the Miracle Park, uh, Municipal Park Field, need lights. We've got the Pickleball Field, need lights. And we've got the Triple Creek Park, uh, Triple Creek Soccer, need light. And if we was to put lights on four, all four of those fields, it's going to be like one million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Only?
Yeah, I mean, these, these are our facilities. We need to fix them, uh, probably build them.
I understand that.
Because right now, the only time they could be used is really in the daytime.
Well, but there's, you know, again, I think we need feedback from the park plan, and we need some plan to make that be, make it provide, make that investment bring us a return. Um, and of course, I'm looking at it in a larger context than probably you are, just having seen this because I know what our other needs are. You know, we're looking at a really major road that we're going to have to work with the state on based on the governor, governor's most recent budget. It's, the city's going to be, or not the city, but this county and this city are going to be responsible for twenty million dollars of. We have, you know, a new fire hall on the horizon, which is going to be several million dollars. And, um, you know, just lots of needs that the city is going to have.
I've only got one more question.
Okay.
Is, I looked down here, and when I looked at the parks budget right there, I seen a million-dollar request for golf cart shed. Um, my question is, is there golf carts that we're renting out or that we're using? Are they just sitting out in the elements? No.
There's an existing shed. This was like for more to expand rental opportunities.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, I just want to ask you a couple of questions. First of all, when will the, when will the pay study be back, do you say?
We think it's going to be presenting in two weeks to this body.
Okay. And a second question I noticed on these new positions, and I'm not saying I don't disagree with you, but there's several people on here that's asking for administrative assistance, such as IT and public works. Do we not have administrative assistance in those departments?
We do not in the IT. Um, we have, wait, where, okay.
Positions right here. I'm just, I'm just curious. We had the-
Mr. De Priest, is that administrative assistant a second one, or is that your reclassification? That somehow got messed up in what got sent to me.
Reclassification request from a customer service representative to-
Yeah, so they're going from customer service to-
But in IT, we don't have one, but we got others, okay.
Mayor, could I ask just one more question of Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown, could I ask you a question, please, once we get through talking? Yes, what? Will you come to the podium, please? Out of these four fields that I just, uh, called out that need to be, uh, need to have lights on them, which one would you say would be the top priority? Would it be the Triple Creek, uh, Soccer Light Field? Or would it be the Pickleball Light Field or Miracle, or the Municipal Park Field or Thompson Park? If you had just one?
The Soccer is, is the most important one right now because they're, they're just out of room until we buy some more land to do something. And, uh, Mayor and I met with them, and that's what they want, that they could play at night and have some more tournaments. Now, the fields at Thompson and Municipal, it's on there, that's replacement lights that could go down to the bottom. The Triple Creek Lights would be additional ball fields lit. And then, of course, the Pickleball Courts, or the new courts that we're finishing up, hoping within the next two weeks, if we can get some lines.
I make that the lowest priority at this point, since they're getting courts.
So do you think the Soccer Field-
I would say by citizens, the Pickleball and Soccer is your most. We've got over a hundred that plays Pickleball right now, and they're wanting more courts.
I hear more from baseball parents.
Yeah, I hear it all.
Well, that would be the new Triple Creek.
Which one of the fields would bring the most revenue from out of town?
But for the cost, which the Pickleball is a small, I'm sorry, and the baseball, if we could get that and we would turn Complex B into a, uh, baseball, softball, both combination of tournaments.
I think we would prioritize those, in my opinion, if we're going to do it.
Well, I, I say it again. I'm probably the only one sitting up here now that travels every weekend to travel ball, basketball, football, baseball. I do it. I know Don does it, and I think-
You used to.
I think we're losing a lot of revenue. I'm not saying in the city, but restaurants, the businesses here in town, there's a lot of money to be had that, that we're not tapping into at all. And we need to get this park system figured out and under control and move forward with it some way. I really do.
But that's, that's why I think, I think we need to wait till that plan comes back.
That's, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I agree with you on that.
And do that.
Yeah, I agree.
And Mayor's already said that, you know, when the plan comes back, we do have maybe some other money that we might be able to put into those lights and stuff, so.
Right, right, right.
But you know, like the Pickleball, I, I know our electric department probably doesn't stock or have the big lights to- or have the big lights it takes to light a field, but you would think pickle, pickle, whatever that is. You would think that we could have some lighting down there at our electric department that could help us get over that hump right there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Motion to send on to council the budget.
Budget, I'll second.
And what I'll do is, after I get feedback from departments, department heads, I'll probably come back to you all as we go to vote on it, and spreadsheet what the, what the total impact, well, what the proposed changes are and what that impact is. That's kind of how we've done it in the past. And you can either be okay with it, or say, uh-uh, I'll take this out.
Okay.
We're open for discussion. We got first and second, we're open for discussion. I just got one more thing, I like saying that's it. I see that IT department asked for $350,000 and got turned down $350,000. I don't know if that's new software, new equipment, or what, but are we still able to work in the capacity that function?
Yeah, I thought all of that was for the document storage, but apparently some of it's for, or, you know, the new doc, converting documents to digital. That's what I thought it was all for. But then I was told this morning by Ms. Smiley that it's actually, some of it is for some much-needed storage. But like, when I, my challenge is, when I am looking at our departmental, or one of the many challenges, I'm looking at our departmental budgets, and I'm comparing them to other, you know, cities in the region, and I just see in some areas, we are so high in comparison to other cities. And so I feel a stress that we can't keep getting so much out of whack with other cities. And so that's why I cut that there, just to kind of draw those numbers back a little bit. But I think we are going to have to put some dollars in for storage for them.
In defense of IT, I mean, we went for many, many years and really didn't have an IT department.
Right, right.
And so we had-
Oh, they do a great job.
We had to put it all on within a very short amount of time. Since Ms. Smiley's been here, we just put it on, so, I mean, I understand it's a lot of money, but, you know, in defense of the IT department, it's expensive, but we had to put all ours on at one time. So I, I mean, I agree with Paige, we put a lot of money into it. And we got a great IT department, I'm not saying that we got a great IT department, but we put a lot of money, and we went from one or two employees to, I don't know how many they have now, but, but several. And it takes that many to run it, so. But I appreciate the budget, I think you've done a great job with it, you and Rachel.
Oh, my, huge compliments both to our department heads and certainly to Ms. Nichols.
And department heads, and we're getting a lot done in this budget, though, so I appreciate it.
As conscientious as I am with our budget, every single one of our department heads are too. And I appreciate their willingness to work with us all to, to keep things running so very well. And that's, that actually goes down to every single employee in your departments, too, because, you know, employees all, all, what are y'all doing over there?
Trying to turn the lights on.
Turn the light?
Nothing.
Turn the lights on. Well, trying to be complimentary, but if you're not going to listen to the compliments, we move along.
Thank you.
Want to get out of here?
Further conversation? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, moving on. And next is our ordinance adopting fiscal year 2023 budget. Rachel Nichols, please.
I think that's what y'all just voted on, so thank you. Before the meeting, I handed out the draft ordinance. I was so late in pulling it together, it hasn't gone to Ms. Heimacalli's office yet to get a number assigned to it, but that's the mayor's presentation put in the budget format that the state requires, so.
So this is the same thing, just in another format?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Which has been a real challenge, because state's making all kinds of changes to the formats and how they want things, but Ms. Nichols is on top of it all.
And then the next item on the agenda is the tax rate ordinance that we're required to pass three times for the 2023 proposed budget. We're leaving the tax rate at .8001.
Any discussion?
So we're leaving the taxes, although we're not raising our taxes.
Right.
All right.
Always good to hear.
Make sure everybody reads that, we are not raising our taxes.
As much as we hear about people saying we have to raise them.
All in favor?
I've got a question to ask Susie, too, after we vote this.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Other business?
Yeah, I'm not on the internet, but I did get an interesting text that since the elections, I think, I think, well, I seen a statement out there that if we, the city approves certain developments, then a county commission would be fining us or penalizing us. Is there any merit to that?
County commission?
Yeah.
I haven't-
Did anybody else see that?
I haven't seen that, so really, I would need to read it, but to my knowledge, I don't know of a mechanism allowed by state law to penalize this.
One of the commissioners, I think, was campaigning that there will be penalties for the cities for, I guess, unnecessary developments, and I was just-
I don't know anything in state law currently that would allow that. You know, like I said, I would need to see exactly what the discussion was, but to my, to my knowledge, as I'm sitting here listening to what you're saying, I don't know of anything in state law that allows that.
I'd be more concerned about the liability for the county of trying to condemn property in that way, you know? That wouldn't be our concern, so let's keep it on what we're doing, I'd say. We got enough to say grace over.
Do we have any other business? I would like to mention that it would be really nice if we could get away from all of these papers and put everything online.
Getting there.
I hear. I think I said the-
Eileen, we tried that.
No.
I'm Eileen.
We may be getting there, but compared to when I'm on planning and everything's online, that's tough. That's tough to look at everything.
I don't need an extra light with the computer.
We are going to go to digital. Jeff and Angela have been working on that for, and Lori, how long, two years, three years?
That's not part of our $2, $350,000.
No, no. It's basically trying to find the software and have them make adjustments so that it's easier to navigate than what you're doing at planning and for the public, too. I know last night, I was downloading the planning agenda, and it took 15 minutes. And then I got kicked off the meeting, and I had re-downloaded again to get the Zoom link. I mean, that's not very user-friendly.
Oh, by the way, Linda, you're doing a great job on planning, too.
Thank you, Sean. It's kind of getting.
There's a threshold to-
John just likes you being on there instead of him, Linda, it's all.
Okay, any other business? Okay, department heads. Then I'll jump up.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Adjourned.
...that, utilities and-
We changed it.
But the con-plan kept the same policy, which the council never adopted. The council did adopt, went back and forth, adopting resolutions to either restrict it or allow it. So right now, the policy in effect, the resolution, which was passed in about 2016 or 17, allows it. So what could happen is that people who want to develop in the-
I'm wrong, Mary.
Allows it. People who want to develop in, surrounding the city, using the city utilities, would be able to do so, of course, at their cost, assuming there's capacity available, but at their cost and develop in the county.